Yeah. Y'all, you're on B report.
They just don't know what that was too.
We get that every year.
I'm just, they're just lucky they haven't gotten in trouble. I'd hate to burn somebody's house.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about and then a bunch of them are over in that field between us and the railroad. It's all dry. I was just waiting.
Did they have some up in your neighborhood? Oh, there was somebody was firing, they had quite a few, they were in an alley.
Well, they were shooting them M-80s, my dog was having a coronary. Poor thing.
What's going on?
My understanding, Mr. Sudolskis could be here. He has to give up and go to see the John Doe.
No.
Not to make any... But not to make any better... We're gonna address that. We... That one's already adopted. We don't enforce it. We don't allow them to walk around industrial area.
Are you sure?
So, so I'm gonna address that. The one that that enforces it, and I told Sean this, I'm pissed about him doing this. He is...
Just one second, I'm sorry.
Manager is the enforcer. We hired... So if it's not being done, all on him, not on us. And people don't understand that. Turn people in and find fences and trees that aren't working.
That's not me.
I'm getting kinda pissed about that, I think it's crazy. But anyway, I hope he doesn't...
Well, we're gonna have another guy too.
Who's that?
Oh, it's a... One of our...
She said hi three times and it's still happening. I'm just trying to say good. What am I supposed to do about that? Where's he been? Um, Montview area? No. Well, on our ward?
No.
No?
North of the movies here.
Oh, okay.
And he was courteous enough to tell me that he was gonna... Come back. I don't like that.
Not 'cause it matters, because all those ordinances apply to this town, right? You know?
Right.
Yeah. Um, one of my rentals. Yep. I'm on vacation and I'm painting my rental. Yeah. I don't mind it, I'd rather do that sometimes than work. Be busy. Do you... I got a couple waters out, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
We run these... We had a guy, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Garcia, came a number of times.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Changing orders, right? He had four of them. And then moved two. He was always here. So, I don't care. They gave our dogs some big cars. The lady that called me. Hi Linda.
Hello.
How are ya?
How are you?
Doing bad.
Yeah, I'm healing.
She looked, did you see that look?
If I was her, I would throw a water bottle right at him. Certainly would be nice to him.
I don't think she saw that with her face. We were counting last night, I told that that's the other story.
Just little white balls.
Yeah.
I have other documents after you.
Hi Darrell. I'm hanging in there.
And if I don't get to you tomorrow. Slave.
Hello, how are you?
Hi Darrell.
Hey, Dwyer, how are ya?
I seen you walking back and forth, I didn't say hi.
Spoke.
Boy, these microphones are just being in the wrong place, huh?
They're weird.
And I'm left-handed, so I'm gonna move all this...
I didn't realize that about you. Thank God for water.
Boy, it's been hot, huh?
Very hot.
How are you?
Doing well, sir, how are you?
Good. What's that? No, my email never stopped going. But once you down here, it... Once it leaks up, it changes that password. All right. That's where I usually...
And get some AC going.
Feels cool in here compared to outside, boy.
You're telling me.
We're outside.
Every day, all day.
Working on that deck and oh my goodness.
Are you coming on it?
Uh, three, four, uh, two-thirds done. No, it had all the, redwood was getting really bad. So I got an idea, we're taking it up, flipping it over. Looks new. It does.
The decking decking?
Yeah.
You should get that, it's like a roll and stuff, it's like gritty. It's a coating.
But it doesn't last as long as it can, it says, because I've seen it around town. Ours was, I went and priced new redwood, ten grand.
Yeah, good luck.
So that's when I said, okay, we're doing something else. But it looks really good. Poor Josh.
Is he helping?
Yeah. Slave labor there, boy.
I've just been outside in it for the last two weeks in this city.
You were out there where you have no air conditioning?
Yeah, there's no, only AC you got is the wind.
We did a lot more than about four o'clock on. Yeah. And do all day, man, it's... It's hot.
Everybody complains about winter, but I can tell you right now about red.
It's winter, you can dress up and put most things on. Summer, you can only take so many things.
All right, are we ready? The time has come, it's six o'clock and I'll call the work session to order and I will turn the floor over to you, Sean.
All right. Sounds good, thank you. So, once a quarter, we wanna do a meeting like this where we just go over some of the accomplishments that we've had and the things that we're working on, the strategic plan. Get feedback from council, see if we need to re-prioritize anything, just have a good, open dialogue about what's happening with the strategic plan. So, we've got the whole crew here ready to answer questions and I'm, what I'm planning to do first is I just wanna cruise through some of the accomplishments, kind of touch on those real quick. And then we'll jump right into the whole strategic plan and where we're at. We, we tried to input like dates that we wanna finish a project. And we, we tried to go in and update, you know, are we on, are we on track, are we falling behind? Those sorts of things so that council can have a better feel for where we're at with everything. So hopefully that's really helpful. And then if you wanna look at the board, I think it'll be most helpful as we're kinda all working on this together, if we try and follow the screen. So, one thing I do wanna point out here is that we have this section at the very bottom, it's called the strategic plan secondary priorities. And these are things that during the strategic plan retreat when we had that, we had primary and secondary responsibilities. And so the secondary stuff ended up here, so we don't forget about it, but it's still important items. So you'll see like the Glen Edition visual barrier was something we talked about, we don't wanna forget about that. So it's, it's something that we can go back to at any time and just refresh our memories. So hopefully that is helpful, we don't wanna forget anything important. And then when you see sections seven through fifteen is all of our different departments. I'll just draw a quick attention to this. If, and we won't be spending a bunch of time on this, but you can see some of the things, and actually, I'm gonna have to do something real quick. Need to open up the whole team plan so we can see everything. Okay. Scroll back down here. So, here's, for example, the stuff that Wendy's working on that may not be potentially, you know, related to the strategic plan. But it's things that she's working on for each department head, working on bids or MOUs or those different sorts of things. And you can see like all the different things in green here, things that she's accomplished and for different department heads. So again, we're not gonna go over all this stuff, but please, if you can, take some time to read through it and see all the good stuff that everyone is doing besides on the strategic plan. I'd also draw attention to just a couple other spots here, like most of Andrea's stuff and the grant writing is down here below, it's not necessarily up above. So you can see the different grants that she's currently working on are all listed right here. Drinking water, ARPA, local government retrofit, some different grants there. And then you can go in here and see everything that she has submitted, it's all in green here. Josiah is another one that you'll see the bulk of his information is down, is down below. Let's see here. It's in finance, under information technology, so you'll see that he's listed out all the different projects that he's working on, where he's at with everything. So, okay, I'll leave it at that, now let's scroll back up here. So let's talk about the accomplishments, I'm gonna cruise through this. So this, and I actually did, there's a couple items in here that we accomplished in FY21. But because there's just a, that's kinda when we got started, I just lumped them into the FY22. But we, we received that 2.4 million dollar grant from, from, to help employees with COVID. Which a lot of that dropped down to just our general fund balance, which was a big deal. We do have the employee culture statement, the frames are ordered right now and they'll be here pretty soon. So you'll see those popping up around the city. This, for employees, the, the COLA that was just passed and it continued to pay for the health insurance, was a huge morale booster for employees. That's a big deal. We're, we're all very, very appreciative to the council for, for prioritizing that. Blaine was able to finish the files, fire civil service policies, redumped the work schedule, how are they liking the work schedule?
Everyone just loved the work schedule.
Good, good. And then you also have the, the safety committee that continues to meet once a month, which is a good, good thing to reduce our liability. We have the ISL hiring, which really improved our, the amount of applicants that we're getting as a city. Our UAs, I think we mentioned a while back that that's gone from two weeks to one hour, which is a big deal for everyone too, that was really causing some issues. The council supported us in paying out that excess vacation and coming into compliance with the sick leave and vacation a while back. That was another good one. We continue to do the barbecue for the summer and Christmas party. Police did the hiring bonus to help with bringing in new officers. We continue to do the employee of the quarter. We did a lot of trainings last fiscal year and I know we don't have as much budget for that this fiscal year, but we still are making that a focus and priority. And we continue to do all the max debt supervisor per year, all those things. I think we had a good year with employees. Beautification, we just finished up the free landfill program, has anyone had any input from residents on that one? Just out of curiosity.
I had a renter of mine that was mad about it, but then I just gave him a couple, because I get, I don't know, of all the properties I paint water on. I just gave him a couple of mine and he was good after that, but...
So it might take a little time for people to start using it and then collecting that a little bit more.
He was just mad that he couldn't go multiple times. His property does not look any cleaner either. Or my property.
So the, the parks, entryways, signage improvements, I know Jason's done a lot with that. And it's really made the parks look a little better.
Sean?
Yeah?
If we could slow down there before, on the employees. I think it's important that we let the public know why we did all the things we did with employees. The reason behind that was we were, we were shorthanded when we started. We didn't have the employees that we needed. Our goal was to try to make a better place for them to work, also to be able to hire some that will stick around a little bit longer and, and help us out. And so, that's important that the public knows that we just didn't decide all of a sudden that we're gonna start giving them all these goodies. We, I appreciate the work that they do. They were having a lot of problems, we didn't have enough people at times to get some of the things done we wanted. And so we're trying to work on that and, and really appreciate the work that, that you did to get that, get that going.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay.
Beautification here, the, let's see, city hall beautification, the flowers are looking good out there. I know Lou's working on some infrastructure fixes, I know it's already looking a little bit better out there right now. We'll continue to do the cleanup days, I think that's been an important part of beautification and, you know, there's so much trash that gets out there, we need to continue to do that. We've got our splash pad in bathroom, which I think is a good visual change. And that was a, that was a big deal a long time coming. The urban orchard was another beautification, that'll be exciting to see as those kinda mature a little bit more. Jason did spend a lot of time on weed cleanup, we had some properties that were really terrible. And he spent a lot of time cleaning those up. I have two adopted streets here, this is just adopt, uh, street park or program. So we've got the underpass that Mayor Wycom has, has taken on and helped us out with.
Mrs. Wycom.
But really appreciate that, that's... That's cool. Thank you for that.
Sean, on that weed, weed cleanup, we've done a lot, not enough. Still getting complaints about the weeds and stuff. I guess my answer to people is that we, we pass ordinances, put ordinances on the books. City council doesn't go out and walk around and look for weeds, that's not our job. We did our job when we passed the laws that says we shouldn't have them. It's important that they know that, that they need to come to the staff and say, hey, this is a big problem we got. I know in my area, in Ward One, we have a lot of problems with weeds and, and all over town, to be honest with you. And, and I know you guys are working on it, but it's important to know that a lot of those problems with cleaning up the town has to do with the ordinances that we got. And if we don't have the right ordinances, maybe the staff needs to bring that to the council and say, hey, we need more laws, so that we can pass them. And, so I just wanted to say that, 'cause I have had people talk to me about that. So, thanks.
Yeah, and that'll be, that'll be an item, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more in just a little bit here too. One of the items we still have further down here is to have another code enforcement officer, which I think, I really do think that's important.
Yes, it is.
So, we'll, we'll keep talking about that here. And then we've got the other thing that was adopted was the Island Park. Steve Sanger that is helping with that, I believe he's still doing that. We've got the planters in downtown that are year-round, trying to keep that, give us a little color throughout town. In downtown, they've got the new, new screen has been repainted, colored crosswalks, table for kids corner, dream sign. Those are all good visual changes. Self-watering planters, the more that we do that, that, that's just gonna bring more color to the city. Oh, cool, that's good. It's good to mix for the watering becomes easier and it's more likely that they're gonna stay looking good. The clubhouse was just repainted, that looks really good. I just drove by there just the other day. The, the carpet improvements to the rec center have been all really great. And then we've had some, you know, the partnerships with the university extension office, which they've been awesome to partner with us on a lot of things. Infrastructure, we do have the capital plan now, it's been updated at least for five years. And then Robbery Park has been completed with some of those fixes, 35,000. We've got the 675,000 that we received that we're already in process of working on implementing that, that money. Did wanna draw attention to the, all the street work that's been done the last fiscal year, last couple, couple of years, there's been a lot. We got six, you know, our six-person crew that's done the 600 tons of asphalt from our plant to patch street cuts, potholes, alleys, bad roads. And then they maintain under 31 miles of roads. We've got the Walnut Street that was completed, which is, I think, a great thing. The 2020 Millenfield project, and sorry, I didn't put more details in there. The 2021 street rehab, which I know a lot of residents made comments about that, seeing a fresher look on their, on their streets. And then we all know this one intimately, the repairs on the transmission line, the blow-offs, air valves that we did to get our water back up and going. And then the golf course restaurant, they've actually had several improvements in there. So that's where we are with infrastructure last year. I think, uh, community trust and engagement, we have the TVs, the council chamber. Josiah's been working on implementing things to help with phishing emails and those sorts of things. We've got the new volunteer committee, which I think has been... How often do they meet, Jason?
Once a month.
Once a month? That's still going well?
It is, it's not me though, it's a whole bunch of people from the city.
Yeah.
High relativity, granted for a while, now we're at 38.
And I know, I know that was the focus of councils to, that we needed to focus more on our volunteers and I think that that's been a good effort. Myra continues to release information through every possible way that we can. The police, I think, is an important focus, especially now, nowadays, where they have a lot of criticism. But I think they're doing a good job reaching out in, in a lot of different community events and those sorts of things, and we'll continue to do that. We've got the Parks Interact Advisory Committee that we set up. We've got the citizen survey, which we will continue to do, I'm excited to see what, what that brings us next year. And I know we saw a lot of really good improvement with that. We've got this now all fully implemented in action strategy, our strategic plan. The behind the scenes videos, we did several of those, which I think were good, and now we're doing that monthly. We've got the committees that are filled, Myra, another hurrah for 100%.
She had to re-expire and resign.
But for a moment. Then we've been doing, the town halls, I think, have been really great, we wanna continue to do the town halls. And we've done two of the city views and we'll continue to do that. So trust, community trust and engagement, I think has been, I think we've done pretty well. Community and economic development, created that department, we've got our $50,000 grant to develop our, our economic development plan. Flatworks ordinance was updated, that's another. That's been on the books a minute. Update, updated or adopted the international building codes, Title 19, as we all know, recently was updated, Title 16, which are, I think, really, really good changes, and we wanna continue to do that. The hub was just put into place, which was awesome. And then we've been just working with local economic development partners, having regular meetings with them. And then we just threw in some, some of the businesses that have come in this last fiscal year, the horse racing, C6 outfitters, La, La Volita, Ichiban and others. So I think, I think it's just important to take, just take a look at that and just say, you know, we, even though there's times where it feels like frustrating by things that are said, like, we have accomplished a lot of things. And a lot of it has to do with support of council, all of our wonderful employees and the strategic plan keeping us on track with this stuff. So, let's jump into employees. We are gonna, and with this part, I'm just gonna ask certain people to come up, I'm gonna try and kinda keep the conversation going and then correct people as, as needed here. But we're gonna keep doing the city scoop, employee of the quarter of the year, max debt and all, all of that stuff we'll continue doing. And then you can just see in here, we have ways to track when all those things get completed. The finalize and implement salary study, this is a, something I could use the council's feedback on, but I, what I was thinking is that we could, when we get this, the audit completed, that we could revisit this conversation at that point. And, and see if we need to do some more in-depth review as with the council. So that's kinda what I was thinking right now. And another thing that will follow that, that we'll work on with our policy is compensation strategy. Okay. So, we're gonna, this one, focus on professional development for council and staff. Some of the things that we're planning to do is, we know that we'll have at least one council member, so we wanna do some training when that person gets here. So we'll do that early in January. We wanna do, every year, we wanna do some legal training. So we'll do that probably in January as well with everyone. We'll continue to do the harassment discrimination training for staff every year. We'll do, with Wendy's help, do some training for volunteers and keep them up to date on the training that they need. And then I did make a, a comment in this section, we, I know we had to pull back on training, but I think because this is a priority that we've still been, I think that a lot of people are still able to do some good training in the city. All right, communication, ongoing communication to, to council, behind the scenes reports, so here's just all that tracking each month. Did you all have a chance to read the July one that we just sent out? Do you have any questions on what happened in... Do you have any questions on what happened in July, or any feedback or thoughts?
It was very in-depth.
We're trying to make it a good quality product that we put out every month. So there's that one. We'll continue to work on the employee personnel policies. We've got that at, Stephanie has it at like 50%. Finishing the police civil service policies at 85%, so that's going really well. We'll continue the monthly safety meetings that Blaine will continue leading us on. We've got the semi-annual events and appreciation efforts that we'll continue to do. Jason is working on updating our safety data sheets, and that's something that's really important to continue to update. You can really get dinged by not doing that. And then Police Department will continue all their efforts like they did this last fiscal year with engaging with the community. And then this last one here is this comprehensive emergency management plan, which is a absolute beast.
It's a beast.
But it's good that we have representation to be able to share our concerns for this So just, just taking a step back, this is what we did when we met together. How do you feel, like, do you feel like the things that councils put in here, these priorities, the, you know, the priority list, how we have them, is this meeting the needs of employees? Just taking, you know, a big step back, and how is this meeting the needs of employees? Do you feel like we're still on track? Do you feel like we need to change anything? Love council's feedback if you have any.
You know, Sean, one of the, one of the things, I think we're doing everything that we talked about, but I think we, a good example would be this code enforcement person. I think that it's important that we push for that. We only have the one code enforcement person. We need another code enforcement person to, to go out and find some of these problems that we got. And I think it's important that we push to try to get one, and I don't know if now's the time that we want to do it. It should be in the summer, should be in the good weather time when they can get out and see some of these problems. One of the problems that I got again was, that I heard, was the industrial, the industrial area, that's been on for a long, long time. The laws and the ordinances are there to take care of that problem. That's not a problem. We have the laws to do that. We just don't have the personnel to go out and address that. And some of them are legal, legal problems. We just can't go in somebody's problem and start taking a piece of equipment and start making them clean it and whatever without them fighting back, somebody fighting back. So I know that's a, kind of slows us down quite a bit on that area. But I think it's important that we, that we, that we pick a, we find another code enforcement person to work with, with the one we got, so we could take care of some of these problems.
I agree. Any...
Go ahead.
Oh.
Well, I was just saying that, that in my, my ward, there's people that own buildings that are just letting them fall down, and they're not even from Rawlins. They're not even from this town. And I know we've been working on trying to figure out a way to go after them. We need to, we need to push that. I mean, we can't, we can't turn our backs to that because that's one thing that's, we're going to be faced to, and I have been faced with, year after year, as to how do we clean this town up? How do we get all these, well, like I say, with one code enforcement person, we can't do it. And then if there's laws or ordinances that, more ordinances that we need, you need to bring them before the council so we can address it. But I want to go with that.
That's right. Yeah, I agree. I think, I think we definitely need that code enforcement officer. So just big picture, do you feel like, from the council's perspective, we're meeting the needs of employees? We're taking care of them?
Yeah, I think we are.
Because I know that was the purpose of this directive to be here, is that we focused on them, and that, and I...
I think we are, and I think the fact that we're filling a lot of these positions and people are starting to, you know, have fuller departments, I guess, is proof of that, is what I would say. I think we're doing okay.
Yeah, I agree. I kind of, I feel the same way. I think we're doing pretty good with, with this being a directive and focusing on employees. We're perfect. We never will be perfect, but I think we're doing pretty good. Okay, so let's go down to the next one. Beautification. Jason, can you update, a brief update on this one, that we've got the entryways and right-of-way aesthetics and some of...
So yeah, there's a couple of different projects here. One is the, like, the West End Green Belt. We're doing some, you'll see some, some improvements, West End Town. You've probably seen where we've taken out some of the turf and we're going to bring in some compost. We're going to, part of that's going to be that alternative turf project, so we're getting something planned there. There's also, all of the park signs have me landscaping, so that's kind of like the entryways to the parks.
And then, one thing that we're, so the Sixpenny has $450,000 coming up. It's kind of at the bottom, so we don't know when that'll get here. And that's for city entryways and also to develop maintenance standards for the city. I talked with our park superintendent, Tyrell Perry. We're going to take that on ourselves and save a considerable amount of money, so we don't have to contract out to somebody for $20,000, $30,000 to develop maintenance standards. So we're going to do that in-house, save money, but what that is, is, for example, in the future, if we contract with, with, with somebody to do some work for us, whether it be park landscaping, irrigation, or planting trees, we hand them those maintenance standards, and they have to follow those rules. So if you plant a tree, it has to have a drip line, it has to have the tubing that gets direct watering. If you plant irrigation, it's got to be scheduled 40 pipe, or certain pipe and certain irrigation heads and all that kind of stuff. So we'll do that part in-house. What we are going to bring to council probably September, ends around here, is we'll do a work session to talk about maybe doing a much larger project at the West End of Town where the City of Rawlins sign is, kind of below Cappy's. And what we would like to hear from council is, do we want to do something very big in that area so that people come off the highway on that exit, they see something really grand? You know, maybe bring in 100,000 yards of dirt and have some nice plants and some, you know, maybe some silhouettes or whatnot. So it'll start with a work session with council, and then you can kick it back, and we can do town hall meetings and gather some input. What we want to do is, we want to be able to have a plan when that $450,000 Sixpenny money comes. Because if it comes and we don't have a plan, what are we going to do with it? So we'll be ready with council's direction on how to go after that work session. So does that make sense and kind of cover everything?
I've talked with a couple of you about potentially maybe spending some of this money earlier than later. Would the council be open to that idea? It kind of like kills me to wait on this thing too long because we, I know our residents really want to see some visual changes. And I think that we could borrow, you know, one of the things that we passed before is we could borrow against ourselves to, like, to try and get a big entryway done. And then the next one is Edinburgh. And so just, I'd love to hear some feedback on this one, if we could try and push that forward a little.
Well, as a business owner, I know that to get people to come in, it's kind of the same thing, and you start at the front door. And so I would like to see the entryways done sooner than later. I think it will help all the rest of, rest of the things we're doing be successful. There was some talk about borrowing money against the general fund and paying it back with the Sixpenny Fund. Once we get our audits and whatnot, I would entertain that. And I think that would be a good investment. Linda?
Yes, we had already voted, I think, a couple of years ago or during this last, this term, to borrow funding if we should find a project in that Sixpenny that we would like to do sooner than later. So I think we've already kind of set a, I don't, I don't know what to call it, not a bar, but a standard or a issue we've already addressed. So if that is something that's important enough, I would support that because I think it's important to get something out there and get, get our Sixpenny visible so that they know that we're still working on Sixpenny projects.
Yep.
I think when we do this, and I'd be okay with earlier, you know, we, we can go back through and figure out and prioritize again if we need to on some of that stuff. If we don't have the funds to borrow, we could still prioritize that again. But I think it's, it is good to show something for the community, but we need to advertise it and make it known, you know, with something showing it's a Sixpenny project, right? Along with that, but I want to see something, when you're talking entryways and a big deal or something, I want to see something done with the sign that was donated by an ex-member of the council and everything else that's on the interstate, a mile out, right? Saying, welcome to Rawlins. I want to see that sign brightened up and lively, and, I mean, it's, it's a great place to start and coming into the town, and then we could have something bigger inside a town too, but it's something that would be worth it. I mean, it's there. You just need to light it up and make it beautiful, you know, attract people. But as far as like entryways and stuff like that, that'll attract businesses and everything else to our community if we can do something like that, too.
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. I think there's kind of two levels of funding for this type of project, and we'll, we'll kind of line it up and let council know possible steps and what staff's recommendations are. But I think once we gather council info, community, something large that in the town, we would probably hire...
A landscape architect to help us with the design that we can bring back to council, bring back to the community. I talked to Austin the other day, because, you know, like, our large water projects and things like that, when you hire a consultant or design engineer or architect, it's usually 10% of the project. I think landscape architects are more like 5% of the project. So we could be looking at maybe a $20,000 initial investment with an architect firm to come in and help design what it would look like with their PC computer programs and make it look nice. And then the next step would be, so then we would have this plan in place for when the remaining funding comes up. So the second part of that funding might be for council to say, well, let's borrow against something if this is only going to cost us $80,000 or $120,000. We'll know at least what the cost will be because that will be one of the requirements of the RFP. Design something the community would be proud of and give us a cost estimate on what it would take to do that.
So I think we're on track on that one. So we'll come back to you maybe a couple of months or so, something like that, bring some ideas down there.
September, we're going to do some extra, I think.
Okay, okay, thank you. The next one is the develop and implement penalty policy for vacant, updated buildings. And Wendy's got that one. We are, I think we're planning to meet it in the next month or this month, where we'll take a look at some policies together and bring that to council. Addressing the dangerous still-updated buildings for redevelopment. Could Mike or Blaine speak to the dangerous buildings task force for a second? What you're doing there?
So the three, three enforcement entities are code enforcement, fire inspections, and building inspections, which also falls under the fire department. So we've got our code enforcement officer and building inspector getting together and making a list of things that they would specifically look at from the curb of a property to rank it so that we can address them in order of the most serious and down. We've asked them to do this so that their process is defensible. So if we were addressing a property and that property owner wanted to know why we were starting with them, we could say, okay, well, you hit 13 out of the 15 things that we're looking for, as an example. So Brian and Ariel are currently working on that list. They're educating each other on, on what it is that they do, what it is they look for, and they're looking to blend both of those investigative parts together to make that list.
And I, I think that's going to be, I think that's going to be real helpful, too, because when we have, when we have this policy and if we have, like, a tiered, you know, you're out of compliance with these first three, then there's a certain penalty for that. If there's three more, there's another penalty. So that kind of lines us up with, when we get that policy in place.
So once we get this in place, we get these, these, check to see if they're following what the city policy is, then we make sure that we send it to the people that own these buildings that are not even in Rawlins and make a big push for it.
Yep.
Because it's, I think it's just been too long. It's just been, and doing, you're doing the right thing. We need to get that done soon so that we can start sending these letters out to these folks and say, we're serious about cleaning these damn buildings.
Yep, and that's the process code enforcement's been using. I believe it's the process the fire department uses as well. We start off with, you know, identifying the properties, identifying the problems, and then starting to work with the owner, giving them warning and moving on from there.
And I'm real supportive of doing it in the business areas, but I'm very much supportive of getting it done in our residential areas in certain parts of town, that when we have these, we want to make sure that these people know that we mean business. They're not going to be happy with what we're doing, but that's okay. We have, it's a rule that the council put out there that we're going to enforce.
So, well, and the key word that I heard was defensible. And so by having that process, and then it's defensible because you're not picking on anybody. You're in the top, you're the top one, you're the, you know.
And we're very aware that it has to be defensible not only for us... But for the council as well. So if a property owner comes to you, you're going to be, we'll, we'll let you know what, what those steps are and what those checkpoints are that we're going to be using so that you can have that information to, to answer to anybody who asks questions.
That system is, is absolutely necessary and, and defensible.
Yeah. I think, and if the council would like, maybe what we could do is like a quarterly update report on, you know, that, once we get the policy in place and, and we start sending these letters of enforcement, we can just give you updates on, okay, this one, they're taking, this property owner's taking it seriously and they're making progress, you know, just so we have, you have that visual, visual of what's going on.
The only thing I want to add to that is Councilman Martinez is saying about out of city or out of non-residents, I guess, property owners and stuff, but I want it known that it's not just non-resident property owners too, it's residents within the city. So the public needs to really understand, it's a push through the community to clean the community up, not just non-resident property owners here getting tagged. It's going to be community members also that own property that's falling apart and stuff like that, too, that'll be tagged on this stuff as well.
Our goal is to address this across the board, starting with serious violations and then moving down.
Correct. Thank you.
Regardless of who owns the property.
I'm a chance, maybe you can help me with this next one, or Andrea, but I know that we have a study where they're going to take a look at a couple of our buildings. Well, there's the Pink Hotel.
The Ferguson Building and the property we own on Pine Street.
Okay. And the reason that that's important is that as soon as we have that done, then we can apply for a Brownsville grant.
Exactly. Exactly. They're going to do an assessment on the buildings, basically give us an idea what, what it would cost for either the city for their property they own or the property owners to tear it down, get rid of asbestos, get rid of the mold, get rid of the feral cats. And then they have a slate to go forward with maybe flipping it to a new property owner by saying, we have all this repair work to do, or even getting them to clean it up themselves and try to have that advantage of having that work done for them so that they can be motivated to address the problems on their property by knowing how much it's going to cost and what it could look like with the vision that the Brownsville people that will come in will create for them.
Do you think we would know about that information for the three properties?
Oh, I'm working on it.
Just, just so we...
Yeah, probably October is when we'll start moving forward.
Okay. This, this next one, find funding or council provide funding for citywide business assistance program. I'd, I'd love to hear council's feedback on this one, and if this one's related to, like, if we implemented a program... And if this one's related to, like if we implemented a program where maybe we, like the city pays, this is just a, just a random number, okay, but like 80% where we pay for, if someone wants to improve their, the look of their property, we're just talking all about visual things, so they want to paint their whole property, we pay for 80%, they pay for 20%. They want to do a facade improvement, 80, 20, that sort of thing. And I, I just, I would love, me personally would love to put a bunch of money into something like this because, again, I know that that visual changes what residents want to see and will help with economic development, its beautification. I would love to hear from council on this one, about thoughts for this.
Sean, are we talking about business properties or are we talking about residential properties?
I'm mostly talking about businesses right now. Because I think one of the key things that we need to focus on is west to east side of town when people curse their hair that we're making improvements to, that visual of when people come through.
And I think, I think that's important for the traffic that's coming into town to see our town doing something. But I also think it's important that the residents in the community themselves that have to live in this community, see that we're investing some funds to get their properties cleaned. That's a big project, and I don't know if that's something that we could handle. It's along the line of, at one time when we asked that we take responsibility for the trees in Rawlins on the right of way, and I told them that that was not an enforceable ordinance, but they passed it anyway. So now we're in charge of every damn tree in this town that sits on the city right of way, but we can't do it. We just don't have the funds to take care of all. That's the same line that you're talking about, except we're, you're talking about business, business properties versus residential. People live in this town and they don't, they don't drive on the highway to come in all the time just to look at the entrances. They want to look at what's happening in their community. That's the kind of feedback that I get when I walk around talking to folks, and I do it quite a bit. I walk around, I stop and visit, get out of my truck, talk to them. What are you doing for us? Why isn't, you know what I'm saying? We need to be looking at our, inside our community, not some, not only the outside of the community.
Linda?
Yeah, I think there's a broader discussion here, and I think that dovetails into whether we want a urban renewal type of program that's, we'll keep DDA, but we expand urban renewal to get some of the funding for it, but also there are some other, I think we visited with Ayers. They are the architect, they come in and work on historic preservation all the time. And they were talking to us about some incentive programs, I want to call them incentive programs, but they're really kind of tax types things that you can do so that you can get funding to do a lot more of this kind of thing rather than just taking $500,000, by the way, is, $541,000 is what we get off housing or taxes from houses in Rawlins. So just put that in perspective. So we need some of the kind of mechanism that would work for this. I think that's what you were thinking of, isn't it, Sean?
So I think on the lines, Linda and Dubarry, I think this is just the low hanging fruit or just some small incentives. The paint program already exists. It exists for out of downtown district. I mean, you can see on there, Tkeg is just getting ready to paint. I mean, there have been other businesses outside of the downtown that have taken, but just really what the small hanging fruit that can do small things that make big image and impacts. And like you said, Linda, that we are working, already having conversations with Ayers, looking into some other, there's a new thing that just came out with USDA today. You know, if there is, there's other communities in the state that have done a facade program, not anywhere near to the detail of what we did downtown, but just new signage, just some smaller incremental things that make a big impact. And so there is a lot, a lot of, not a lot, there is funding out there, and it could be competitive. And we also can go off of what Chief Ward was saying is if it is something that is defensible and they really need to change it, you know, if we do have a program, a small facade program for the city, then we, you know, those businesses that are up at the top of the list under Ariel's and the code enforcement, maybe those are the ones that rise up. I think there's so many different ways we could actually lay out this citywide business assistance program.
And we have a, once Ayers come, is there going to come and visit with us more about the URA?
Yeah, we just haven't, I sent, they, we should have something from them this week. Yeah, we had a meeting with them last week.
You know, I agree with what you're saying. I know what you're saying. We need to make these properties look a lot better so when folks come into our community, they see a real nice community. I'm talking about, we have people that have properties in my ward that don't even live in our ward, that if we want to help them out to clean it up, is that what you're saying? They're a business. Are we going to go out and look for properties that are all over town that we could help and say, "We're going to pay 80%?"
Well, I, I think that we just figure out, roll out the programs or make a decision on what programs we want, start small, test before we invest, and then roll it out citywide. Ward one, ward two, ward three, all wards.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And test it, because like I said, there are some small facade programs that are across the state that we could take and pick and choose. I mean, we created the one for downtown out of about 10 different options. I think there's a lot of different options we can do.
And I know it'll help because we do have some folks that, and I don't know who they are or what they are, but they went down to the Purging School property and the job they did on it, and they did it last year, but they did this year, they went and they mowed that whole field. They mowed and they cut all the weeds, and if you go by there and it looks like a park, and that made that area of the community stand up. And that's the kind of stuff we need to, those kind of people might need some help.
And I also do, oops, I'm sorry. Whatever we create for the city and whatever the council chooses to create, the business owners need to have, have to have skin in the game. I mean, they're, I mean, they have to have, we're not here to just give and give. They have to have skin in the game.
Yeah. Councilman Weiserman?
Yeah, I could get behind finding funding for businesses for, because I, I mean, we've talked about creating an incentive program for economic development reasons. So I could get behind finding funding for that, but I think if we start providing funding as a council through that, I think it could get a little bit wish, you know, wishy-washy with, so many, certain person got this much, certain person got that much, they did this, they did that, right? So finding funding and grants and stuff like that to supply a program for that, I could get behind that. But I think we do need to come up with a incentive program for economic development for businesses and stuff like that coming into the community.
You know, we need to, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
And that was going to be my question. All the funding would be through grants, correct? Not taxpayer money?
I think it just depends on what council wants to do. It's kind of a matter of how aggressive do we want to be with it? Because we, we could, the city could, you know, create our own program and fund it, or we could, you know, pursue other opportunities, which we definitely will, like with the URA, we'll explore that, but it's up to the council how aggressive we want to be with something like that.
You know, one thing that'll help, we recognize some of the people that are trying to do some work. Good example are the apartments, low-income apartments that are by the fire station, they're putting a new facade on them, they've been putting siding and whatever windows and fixing it up, that's making it look real nice. Stagecoach Apartment is probably one of the nicest apartments you can find in town. You go look at their landscaping. They, I don't know who does their work, but yesterday I was riding around trying to find a spot to watch the fireworks, and I looked over there and man, they, they got that property looking real good and it stands out. And so we need to recognize those kind of companies that come in here and are willing to work with the city, not just want some from us, they're doing it on their own.
Well, one example's on the west end of town where FNS Trucking cleaned up a whole big mess on the west end of town, leveled it all out, they've got their big equipment That was a huge improvement done by a private company, and those are the kind of people we should look to help also.
Yeah. So if I could maybe try and summarize a little bit right now, we'll try and bring this URA discussion for more discussion. I think everyone seems like there's definitely some interest in that. And then maybe when we finish up with the audit in just a few months from now, we could rediscuss this, maybe we have a work session just on like ideas of how we could do a program or what are different program ideas that we could, the council could digest and think about and how we want to implement it.
Well, and our economic development partners by that time could come to us with some options on what's available also because as, you know, I don't know what all programs are out there. I know some of them, Brownsville, I've had some experience with some of those kind of things, but what's available now is a different deal.
Yeah, so maybe we could come up with some ideas and share it with council.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Williams?
When I first got on the council, I brought this up, but we have all new people at the time, but I travel in Warland, and they, the city allows the citizens to borrow money to get, or get their curb and gutter done, and then they pay it in increments on their water bill or their utility bill. And it's very successful in Warland, but at the time, they told me that we couldn't do that. But it would be nice to look into that, to see if it's doable.
That's like an improvement district, doesn't it?
Yeah, LIDs.
They borrow the money from this, or the help financially to redo their curb and gutter. And they pay like $20 a month.
Dubarry had an idea that's very similar to that, some of these old buildings that need tore down and the people cannot afford to pay for the landfill fee. Let them, let them owe the city for that landfill fee, and then when they sell the land, pay it back or whatever. And that would get rid of some of these buildings, because I know there's quite a few of them that people just can't afford to pay to get them tore down.
And now that we have a lien-
Then we put a lien on it.
The lien program available to us now, we can start thinking more innovatively.
But anyway, in Warland, that was the community that does the curb and gutter.
Does the council have appetite for trying something like that? Because I know this one's kind of a tough one because people have to pay for it essentially a different way, but you're right, like it is effective if you can get the buy-in.
Well, I was, I run a lot usually, not so much this year, but I was running around their city, and I had mentioned it to my manager over there, I said, "You guys have the best sidewalks here, because you notice that when you're a runner." And she told me, "Well, that's because the city does this." And then I brought it to the management at the time and the attorney at the time, and they said, "You can't do that, but it might be something to relook at."
Yeah. Would you all be interested in exploring that idea? Maybe try, we could try it out in a neighborhood or something?
I would. And also, I think we've looked at local improvement districts before, it's called LID, LIDs. That might be something they're doing, but if it's just a pot of money that Warland is loaning out to citizens to do city improvements or public improvements, that'd be cool, too. We just have to have the money. But there may be something, some mechanism there that we don't know about and makes it easier so they can loan money to individual people.
That's something our economic development people should look into and bring to us.
Yeah.
How do you implement that?
Yeah.
We got, we got a piece of property on South Front, South Front. You got to go by there and see that. It's ready to be torched. Once it catches on fire, it's going to take the whole block. Whoever owns that property, maybe that's their problem, maybe they can't afford to pay for landfill fees. Maybe we could work out a deal with them, but hey, look, we'll put a lien on your property, you pay us back so much, or when you sell the property, we get our money back. But that place has to be cleaned because if it ever catches on fire, it's going to take a lot of neighbors. It's that bad. These trees are rotted, they foul down, they've been piled up. Those are the kind of things that I'm looking at when I ride around is, is how can we, how can we do this and still hold the property owner responsible for doing it, but at the same time help them out?
Okay. It's okay, I'm going to shift to the next one right here. We've got continue cleanup day and cleanups, we'll keep doing what we're doing there, unless there's any feedback on that. The community banner project, we have some good stuff.
Well, we tried, but it was a little windy to get on a 10-foot ladder. It was fun. So banners, the first round of banners will go up this week, so they're amazing.
They'll be fun.
So that'll be cool to see that go up. The next one is maintain and improve appearance of all city properties. I think this remains an important thing to do because residents, you know, they always say, "You got to take care of your own before you're enforcing someone else's stuff." So we do have some upcoming projects, like internally, the HVAC, wastewater exhaust, like there's a bunch of different projects that our facilities workers are working on. There were a couple of things that we did in-house as well, I just wanted to point this out, like the, there was a John Deere gator that we fixed in-house instead of bringing it outside, and we saved a bunch of money, saved $10,000 on doing that in-house, so that was, that was cool. But I appreciate that our staff are looking at opportunities like that.
Real quick, that was also combined effort between Parks and Racing, Community Development, and our staff mechanics to make that happen, too.
And Jason, could you give a quick update on, because this is something council's asked about, is the surplus auction, kind of our plan now?
Well, we started, we worked with an auctioneer and started looking at doing an auction this summer. And what we kind of decided is, do we want to have an average auction this year and an average auction next year? Or do we want to focus on giving us some more time to really identify equipment that can be held for auction next summer? And I think Chief Ward has some questions, maybe with Wendy and some items in, not necessarily in surplus, or how to, I guess, I don't know if you know the right terminology, but-
Confiscated.
-items maybe and can't be released yet, and trying to figure that out. So we figured it'd be better off to buy us some time and focus on a better auction next summer. So it's still on our radar, we're just going to give it more time and have a much bigger and better auction next year.
Well, and I think along those lines, our procurement policy and disposal policy, whatever, the disposal's not the proper word, but I can't think of the proper word, but we need to get those in line, too, and maybe we can have that done by the time we have these auctions.
Agreed.
So that, yeah, and also the process of, some of our equipment has just been sitting there for 20 years out in the yard, so we're going to drain the fluids and haul them out for scrap metal. So that's one of our projects that we'll be doing in the meantime, is getting rid of those non-auctionable items to get them out of the way. So next year, we're focusing on items that we can actually bring to auction.
Yeah, one man's junk is another man's gold, so remember that. I mean, it might be useless to you, but somebody might think they can fix it and they'll buy it. I've been to a lot of auctions that I wouldn't buy half the crap there.
Okay, but the next one that we have on here is the Adopt a Street Spot Program. I know one thing, if Jason has time, this is just a matter of priorities, the Adopt a Park Program. So you can see on here that one is a, needs attention, it's something we want to do, but not sure if we have the time. Here's the funding code, code enforcement position is right here, so we don't forget about this. And then this one, we heard from Jason on this one, the Alternative Turf Study that's being done right now, another beautification. So now that we just finished the beautification section, if we take a big step back and think, are we, do you feel like we're on the right track with what we talked about right now? Do we need to do anything different? Are we getting where the council wants us to go? This is my question.
The only thing I can say about that is I would like to see something very visible done so the community- done, so the community can say, hey, look, we're getting this done. And, and the entrance ways to me are really the most important thing. If we're wanting to attract more people to come through town or whatever, it's just no different than a business. You, you don't have an ugly front door, you fix that first and then, and then you fix the back door.
One subject that we talked about, and I've talked about it for the last five years or longer, is to extend Cottonwood Village into Davis Street, put a road there so that those kids can walk to the park without having to go a mile around. I think I mentioned it to Sean about maybe there's a possibility that we could visit with the county and have the Road and Bridge build us that road at a lesser fee than we're talking about, because I mentioned that one of the councils decided that we should do it in-house, well, it turned out we don't have the equipment to build that kind of a road. It's not a real long one, but it's, it needs to be worked. If we could visit with Road and Bridge, they built that road that brings, that bypassed all the trucks in front of a park. I brought that up to three different councils before we got it done, and it was done by the county after they gave me a call and said they could help us. And they built that road. If we could visit with them and maybe Road and Bridge would be willing to, for a free fee for the material or whatever they do, I don't know anything about that, that's not my job, but I, I was wondering if we couldn't approach somebody through the county and see if they would be interested in doing something like that with us. That would tie that community into the City of Rawlins and they wouldn't be out there by themselves.
I was walking to my parents' house last night to go watch the fireworks from their beautiful deck, but my neighbor stopped me and he said, why don't we have?
So being in the, in the new big work, he's a lot of do more stuff, I don't know, just throwing an option out.
Well, one person can only do so much and there's a procedure they go through and I think he does a great job, but he's one guy.
Yeah, I understand.
So until we feel comfortable making it two guys, we're only gonna get one guy's worth of work done.
Yeah.
So Councilman Martinez?
And, and I'll mention this, we have ordinances that handle that. And I honestly believe that if the code enforcement went by my property, and I've hired people to cut my weeds, but I looked just today and they're already yea high. Rollins is a place where we do have problems with weeds and it's, it takes a lot of effort. We, we could get somebody, that's a place where we could get somebody where they can start putting tickets on anybody that has weeds higher than what it says in our ordinance. And I'm telling you, they might be, this room might be full of people. Right now, I'm telling you right now that if we went after them all over town, industrial site, residential areas, we, we would have a problem. This council and the councils in the past have passed ordinances to try to combat the weed problem. Has it, have they been enforced enough? Not really, but if they did, I'm telling you, we would, it would be a constant battle at this city hall.
Uh, I've dealt with code enforcement officers all for several years around here. A lot of them, and battling the circumstances with a lot of them like Frank Parko, they just don't think about it. But if you just send them a letter saying that, you know, you're getting out, they take care of it, no problem, you know, they love you, just don't pay attention.
True, but this person you're talking about, the second person's gonna expect a paycheck.
Well, and that's why.
And if we can't pay them, we're gonna have a problem. So I'm gonna make sure we can pay them and then we'll hire them.
That's why I wanted a secretary who was talking to me more, you know, a whole top there's all.
She's gonna want paid too.
Yeah.
Just so you know. Okay, we need to move on or we're not gonna get done.
Yeah.
We're getting close.
Does, just real quick, what Linda just mentioned, does everyone feel generally like we're going, at least going in the right direction with beautification with what we talked about?
Yeah.
Everyone's kinda feeling that way?
Yeah.
No, it's not a, it's not a perfect, it's one of those things like, we generally feel like we're going in the right direction.
We have a lot of plans, so let's put it that way.
It's a breathing document.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, I think we're, I don't think we're gonna get through this, we don't have enough time. Um, I, is it okay with council? I could hit on some of the infrastructure stuff and then reschedule for the rest of this, cause I just, I didn't wanna shortchange this conversation, I think this has been good. Um, would that be okay?
Yeah.
We'll just go as far as we can and then we can check up a different night. Okay.
I'm okay with that, everybody else?
As long as I get a bathroom break.
Okay. You got ten minutes.
Okay. All right, so the, well, it's gone to infrastructure. Um, we've got the continuous source water protection, including springs, wells, transmission line fixes, and then we have a huge section under this. We've got the obtaining a loan, which we're, which we are working on right now. Um, we're gonna go after, uh, well, who would like to speak on that for a second? Austin, our team, we're looking at two options basically for the loan.
Honorable Mayor, Council, just wanted to really quickly update you on our process. Uh, right now Andrea and I are working on a USDA loan application for rural development. And then simultaneously in that process, we'll be looking for SRF funds to, to complete the, the larger major infrastructure, infrastructure project for our, our water for the city.
Um, the pre-treatment plant, would you speak to that one for a second? I know there's several that would like an update on that.
Yes, and so with the pre-treatment plant, uh, we have Y2 Consultants LLC on board. We are having our first kickoff meeting. Uh, let's see, what was that? The, the 11th or no, the 15th? No, no, the, it's the 11th. So the first kickoff meeting is, is on the 11th, it'll be over the phone, and then on the 14th, they're gonna come boots on the ground and we're gonna start this pre-treatment startup project.
And we got held up for a minute because?
Yeah, so, right, between all the sub consultants and getting those sub consultant contracts signed and then back to the prime consultant, it ended up taking more time than we expected.
And this still remains our key way to get water. If we'll be able to change our restrictions, is if we can get this pre-treatment, it's still the, the key thing.
So are you saying that the 11th, you're gonna have a trial run on the pre-treatment plant? Is that?
We're going to discuss and kickoff the, the project. We're gonna discuss who's gonna be the, the key people on the job and kind of go through the project documents, uh, that they, that they went and bid on and so we can get started.
Cause that's one of the, the other things that people are talking about is when we're gonna get this pre-treatment plant started. And I said, uh, I thought we maybe we'd find out today. Uh, my thinking is that once we get that started, then we can back off on this, uh, uh, watering restrictions, back off a little bit on it and maybe make it two days or three days. In Cheyenne, I stopped at city hall down there and visit and they're, they're a three day, they have a restriction of three days. But I think, I don't wanna go to three, but I'd like to see us at least pick it up to, to two days a week or something. My grasp, I mean, I think everybody here is gonna say the same thing, our properties are looking pretty bad.
And so with that, I would expect at least a month from the kickoff. So with that being the 11th, I would expect somewhere in mid-August before we could make any real improvement to our water situation, just in terms of the turnaround time. And that's if we don't have any major infrastructure improvements needed for it to function properly. If it requires substantial infrastructure improvements, it may not be until next year.
And that, that's what people wanna know. They wanna know that, hey, August, the last part of August, we might get that treatment plant going and it's gonna be a little late, but that's when it's gonna be done, then they can expect that.
And one, one thing, just letting you know, when we talked with the contractor and also another individual in their office today, we, they, it's abundantly clear how important this is to council, to the residents. We made sure that was stuck in their mind, cause it, I know this has gotta be the number one thing that you guys are getting asked about right now.
Yes, it is.
Actually, as far as beautification, the best thing we could do is go to two days a week.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously.
Yeah.
Cause it, it looks, my lawn's dead.
It's sad.
I just wanna speak to that, cause I understand, we approved three weeks ago, we approved for this to go out, right? Uh, we approved the, the consultant and now we're looking at another two months almost or a month, a month and a half afterwards. And, and you're a month away from them, you know, starting something, it seems like. And the citizens aren't happy about it. I'll, I'll speak up about it, they're not happy, their lawns are dying and this is something that we're trying to make work and it, it seems like it keeps getting pushed further and further out and it's, to me frankly, annoying, right? Myself. Um, because I have to go and talk to the citizens when they're asking me this, these questions. So it, it's uncalled for, in my opinion, to be this for, much farther out on something that was approved three weeks ago with a contract in hand.
Mayor, may I just say something really quick?
Yes.
Cause I know we're running out of time. Um, I ask about that because that, knowing that that, bringing the engineers on board was a crucial thing and the pre-treatment plant was, is key to removing restrictions. And it isn't at our end that that happened, it's at their end because of their subs and all of that. And so it, it, it's not our city staff. They've done everything they possibly can to get it out the door and back that contract.
And we'll continue to push hard, just like I mentioned today, we were real clear with them that how important this is to everyone, that was the message there. Emergency hydro vac contract with sweater treatment plant?
Yeah.
We worked on that one?
Yeah, so we're looking for the second contractor that we had previous experience with. We may have to just forego the previous contractor to find another, a second contractor for that bid.
Okay. And then, real briefly, let's talk about the 10,000 feet, if you wanna give an update on that one.
Okay. So with this project, currently we are going through the, uh, the final process for the install, installation of the 10,000 feet. We have the 10,000 feet installed, we went through a testing process and at this time, it's my recommendation to, uh, to the council and it's my decision as well, is that we would accept the 10,000 feet. The testing regimen, as it turns out, in the contract exceeds the, the strength of our pipe that was selected by the previous engineer, Carl Smith, and this pipe cannot be tested at what was in the contract. And I believe that it's a good thing that we didn't do a full testing of this section of pipe, cause we may have seen additional failures. And I believe that since the city provided all the materials for the construction of this pipeline, that no warranty could be included in the work. Where if we had a failure due to the testing, uh, there's very little, uh, evidence to me that could determine if it was a manufacturer's, uh, weakness or if it had been broken in the field. It, and we inspected all the pipe as it came in, but some damage you cannot see. And so with that, it's my recommendation that we accept the, the installation of the 10,000 feet. And then move on and start the connections and get the water flowing to town with what we have.
Mayor?
Would be like two weeks, right?
Uh, it's, I believe that the new connections, uh, fully connected, it'll take approximately a month to get all of the connections complete. The testing process took almost an extra week and a half because this is irrigation pipe. Frankly, this is what is supposed to be used for farmers growing alfalfa and other things, not for taking care of a city's infrastructure. And, uh, frankly, I don't know that there are any ways that we can test it, uh, where there's a standard. The standards I could find on it, uh, were from one manufacturer, but our manufacturer had no testing regimen. So I honestly, I'm at a point where I think it's better just to accept the work and move forward and provide a future redundant line. That's the best I can do. It's an irrigation line.
Mayor?
We're gonna have to, uh, take a break. Take a break.
I just wanted to know, really?
Can we cut it off there, Sean? Is this a good place?
Yeah.
I just wanna know if the 10,000 square feet's gonna work for now.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
It will, in fact, right now, it is collecting water that we hadn't before.
That's good news, thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Thank you, okay, we're gonna recess this work session and take a break. Hi Governor.
We stay live, let's sound. We stay live, let's sound.
So you don't get surprised? Longer than four calls. And it's if that is too late.
And you do your legacy, right?
Yeah. What I'm doing is, uh, I'm working with, with that ordinance to make some small changes, to make some small changes. When it's written up, they'll send it to you. To the council. So we can, you can leave it to them. Put it together, well, even if we were violation, there's nothing we can do. So I can just, well, don't make shifts. We don't have no teeth. So, so what should I have to do? Talk to them, they don't have, they don't have. They, uh, they, they don't have what they want to do.
I've seen that one. Yeah, yeah, that was in our email.
The Casper, oh, they send it that way, I guess.
Yeah.
Cause I visit with manager on that.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's what I'm doing, so you're gonna come sneaking around doing something.
Oh, no.
I'm working on it, and then when it's all said and done, you put it on the agenda beforehand, you'll have access to me.
Yeah.
No, I'm, yeah.
Good work for me, that, you know?
I tell you right now, if you get up here. Yeah, there were, we, we had some.
I tell you right now, if you get up here.
Yeah, it is, of course, well, what it is is that if the fuse doesn't connect right and it doesn't go for like that or something like that, you can actually pull a long fuse up, do it, but we've run out of power.
I'm telling you right now, I hear you, there's some fire in the building, don't like that? Okay.
We're using smoke to gas. And when I'm talking, it's like five.
That is loud.
Hey, what's going on, man?
How's everybody?
Hi stranger. I got, I thought you moved, Donnis.
You got what?
I thought you moved, Donnis, I haven't seen you for so long.
He forgot what she looked like.
Sure.
Apparently, we're gonna have a little chit chat.
Who's that?
Uh, seven thirty.
Yeah, exactly.
Just came for a little chit chat. Everybody's up?
Oh, that, that would, that would get you out of fire.
Thank you, sir. Kinda goes right around the circle.
Well, I guess it was, uh, I don't, I don't, I guess we were probably, it was that.
Yeah, they did see you.
Detail was there.
Sorry.
I'll tell you right now, what we do is, I, I said, I was, anyway, I'm up there, we are from there, we have, I can't, my finger, I can't.
A lot of watches are great when it starts.
I can't think of that.
No, it's not, not, all of them.
I found at least three now.
I'll eat, no, once there's three, there's a thousand.
I know, but once I pulled the one, then it manifested the two.
Yeah, you shouldn't, uh.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I'm just doing that section, that's to finish up.
It's national level.
So I don't think that one section is too much, can get pretty far, but any suggestions?
It's daylight tonight, all my stuff.
It's a legitimate question. We're okay.
Sorry, I really apologize.
No, no, they didn't do anything they should apologize for.
I don't have any clue, but I have a feeling.
I haven't, I haven't heard, I've been heard, I've been told.
You've been doing pretty good, but.
Well, thank you, Mom.
Do you actually, I turned, you're like.
I can be very loud.
Can you turn this up? Speak into the microphone.
He tries. Mine doesn't ever carry.
I don't think carrying's quite tall enough. Mine will probably be turned almost all the way down, too.
All right, we're ready to get started here, I'll call this meeting to order, it is seven thirty-two. And, uh, please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, this is, this is definitely a thing to see who's paying attention.
Thank you. Uh, next thing on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykem.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Durst.
Here.
Councilmember Daryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Devari Montinas.
Here.
Councilmember Linda Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda, I would entertain a motion, Vice Mayor Wells, has her hand up?
I move to approve the July 5th, 2022 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the July 5th, 2022 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I will vote yea aloud until I get online here.
Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the June 14th, 2022 regular meeting. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022 as presented, if there are no additions.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yea.
Online vote, online voting is closed, the motion passes with five yays and two abstained. Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Smith abstained.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda, I would entertain a motion, Vice Mayor Wells, has her hand up?
I move to approve the July 5th, 2022 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the July 5th, 2022 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I will vote yea aloud until I get online here.
Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the June 14th, 2022 regular meeting. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022 as presented, if there are no additions.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2022 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yea.
Online vote, online voting is closed, the motion passes with five yays and two abstained. Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Smith abstained.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 21st, 2022 as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of June 21st, 2022 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is, uh, the second reading and the way of the reading of the ordinance amending resolution number 7B to 2015 fees, finance, water, sewer and utilities, appendix E, page 2 of 2, recycling utility fixed rate in changing the monthly fixed rate charged to residents from $3 to $6. During this public hearing, is there anybody that would like to speak to that? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. And we'll go on to the next thing on the agenda, which is citizens' participation. Um, this is a time when you can, uh, address the council on anything that is not on the agenda and you can have up to five minutes to speak to that. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that? Please come forward and go to the podium and state who you are and what you need to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. My name's Michael Young, I live at 2514 Kilmary. This issue that I'm here to talk about started at the end of March with vehicles without license plates and basketball hoops on the street. At May 11th, vehicles moved from Kilmary Street to Aberdeen. May 23rd, basketball hoop still on the street blew over, completely blocking the sidewalk. He continues to this day to block sidewalk with the hoop. Kids are out in the street, some are pretty little. I would say that would be endangering children out playing on the street that's five years old, six years old. It makes it hard to walk in the neighborhood with a hoop and vehicles parked on the side there. I refer to this magazine, which you put out, which I think is very good. Item 3, vehicles and trailers can only be parked outside the travel portion of the street and must not interfere with vehicles or pedestrian traffic. No personal property or trash shall interfere with vehicles or pedestrian travel, including in alleys and sidewalks. Rollins permissible code 12.24.050. Now, I understand that we can't expect our police department to know every permissible code, but whenever something has been brought up and has been brought up in front of people and nothing has been done, that's the reason why I'm standing here. Because it has been brought to the attention of people. because it has been brought to the attention of people. And being a senior and with my wife, she walks more than I do, but it's something that I think it shouldn't be there. And kids shouldn't be out in the street, even though it's on the code sack. So that's what I have to say, and I hope that we have something resolved to this. And the bad thing about it, it is a policeman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else who would like to address the city council at this time? Come forward. Same girl.
Yeah, Kelly Brandt. I was just going, I know you're gonna maybe approve a back excavator today or something like that, but I think you guys need to take a look at that a little bit better, you know, because we can probably rent one a little cheaper when we need to use it. Or, you know, you can hire a company, a local company that has one already. So just think about that, you know, because it, just sitting there, the maintenance that you have on it. If it's just sitting there, you're paying insurance on it, you know, and making the bill on it. So just think about, before you make that approval, think about, you know, we could probably go out and rent one cheaper for how many, you know, for the little use that we're gonna use it for. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the city council at this time? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the presentation of a Community Builder Award for July 2022. And I would turn the floor over to you, Jason.
Honorable Mayor and Council, if there's any members of the volunteer committee, could I ask them to come forward? I'm always excited to present this award. I'm a little, maybe a little extra excited this evening. Here comes some of the members of our Shooting Range Advisory Board. So as we all know, the Community Builder Award is a monthly award the city presents to local businesses, individuals, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to Rawland City, Rawland's quality of life. The volunteer committee met and would like to present the 2022 July Community Builder Award to the Shooting Range Advisory Board for their outstanding service and contributions to our community. And if I could take just a moment, I want to mention just a few of the very, very, very many things that this shooting board has accomplished. And it starts much before what I'm going. I mean, they, this board was involved with developing the master plan that gave us a roadmap on how to develop the outdoor range, which is a beautiful facility. So here's some of the accomplishments, and I'm not gonna catch them all, but I'm gonna try to do some. They built walls dividing the 10 handgun ranges out at the shooting range. They worked with staff to get an NRA grant to fund shooting benches, built and set up target systems for the handgun ranges, established monthly and annual handgun competitions. They built an elevated outdoor archery stand, which my son and I thoroughly enjoy. They built five-stand shotgun range, devised a 1,000-yard target system for long-range rifle competitions through funding with the Friends of the NRA. The Shooting Range programmer Clint Poswell-Wait and the advisory board members have just greatly improved the amenities of our, of both ranges, indoor and outdoor, finding money and in-house, boots-on-the-ground kind of guys and gals to help keep machinery working and supporting all shooters and all shooting organizations. And so I, I could go on and on and on, but I think I'll leave it at that. But I personally want to thank you. I, I try to attend all the Shooting Range Advisory Board meetings, and it's very well-run, and these guys mean business. And, and they're out there, like I said, boots on the ground. They're out there doing the work. And so you are all very well-deserving of this award tonight.
We're gonna do a photo here if you want to turn around.
Okay, ready? Cheese. One more. Cheese. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your hard work. It is appreciated.
Thank you.
Our thanks to Jason and his staff on the recreation program. Without their help, we'd be all alone.
Teamwork.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks again. All right. The next thing on our agenda is the DDA Main Street report. Pam?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I was hoping that Sandra would be able to be here tonight, but she had to make a quick dash to Torrington to get a grandson. But I just want to say volunteers, staff, everybody working together. This is Summerfest weekend, and we have over $20,000 in sponsorship this year. But I have some fun stuff. You guys know we're having a ropes course. We're gonna give a zip line. That's all coming to the community for free. Everybody will be able to do those things for free in the downtown and the community. And so we're super excited. But a couple really fun things is we have a theme this year. It's called Blown Away. So I know you guys have been hearing about, Myra, were you pass these lovely kites out? The council each get their own, and we made one for Sean too. So if you can hand out, you guys can come. If you haven't made a kite, or your kids, or your family, or your friends, please come down to the depot this weekend. We have, we're gonna have over 150 kites that will be hung on display. And then we'll have a kite-flying day August 18th, the day before school starts. And come fly your kite. Now, there was another saying in the office today that we could go, council getting their kites, you know, go fly a kite, whatever. It was kind of fun. I said, oh, Sandra, you're not gonna be here to say that, and I'm not gonna say that. But anyway, on top of that, we also have some other gifts. You know, it's that time. Is you have a few more pieces you need to hook your kites together? So kids can come make kites. Adults can make kites. They can paint them. Marge, you've got a Wyoming Arts Council grant. This is the one she made for DDA. She made every business in the downtown a specific kite for their business. This happens to be ours. And then we thought we'd have a little fun with your kites. And then on top of that, everybody can come down for a few dollars, either $2 to $4, depending on what you pick, and make wind chimes. And this is a fundraiser that will be happening. And so each of you guys get a little wind chime. And then also, we have created little cards to thank all of our sponsors. Of course, the city of Rawland is on here, Rec Center, all the partners. And then on the backside will be the schedule. So you guys will, and these can go back to hold up. But we're just super excited. It's gonna be a big one. We're gonna lay it out a little different this year. We'll have the car and bike show from third to fourth. We'll have all the big ice cream and watermelon happening on the intersection of Fourth and Cedar. Vendors will be from Fourth to Fifth. We are allowing Fifth open this year for, because we've had some feedback that people want to get to the post office. But it's because we're also taking it down on Front Street and Fourth Street. So food vendors will be on Fourth Street. Friday night, we have a cornhole tournament. That's a fundraiser, another fundraiser for another organization. I think it's the volleyball girls, high school volleyball. So lots of fundraising, lots of great vendors, and lots of activities. So we'll see you guys this weekend. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
See, this is the fun part of the job.
I don't think I made a kite since I was 34 years old. Forty-three, no, 34.
All right, thank you, Pam. Next thing on our agenda is the city manager and staff report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I don't really have any more updates besides what, because I've spent a good portion of the time talking tonight. So I don't have anything else.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is the city attorney report.
Thank you, honorable mayor, council. Just a couple of quick updates. I have been working with the county, and we are well on the way to getting abatement lien memorandum of understanding completed. We're hoping that maybe by the end of August, we might have something ready to bring to the council and the commissioners for that. I am working on amendments to the council attendance ordinance. As soon as I get those edits, I will be sending them out to everyone so that you can submit any other edits before I bring it before the council. We have got tentative sign-on from the water attorneys for the HF Sinclair water negotiations. I have a tentative appointment set up in two weeks so that Kathy, Sean, I, and the water attorneys can discuss that contract. And the golf cart MOU has been finalized through the attorneys. It is currently with the commissioners. As soon as they give it the thumbs up, I will be bringing it before the council. That's for the fair use of the golf cart.
Thank you. That's awesome. All right. Next thing on the agenda is a direction from the city council to the city manager and city attorney. We covered a lot of that earlier, but does anybody have anything else? Sean?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we may have a staff report.
Oh, okay.
Austin, are you recording? I know he had just a one or two words.
Sure.
Sorry.
No worries.
Honorable Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity to present. So I wanted to wrap back up, kind of go back to where we were talking earlier. And so I wanted to give you some assurance here with regards to the city water line that we've installed up at the Spring Basin Collection System. And what the engineer, the design engineer says, that I figure that if the pipeline industry is making pipe that is rated at a pressure of so many PSI, that means that the pipe will hold up to that many PSI for a long time, effectively speaking. So if it's an 80 PSI pipe, it should hold up to 80 PSI. So he's not too certain about the burst strengths of the particular pipe in question, but we know that we'll never exceed the 20 foot, 20 feet of pressure that this line can get at its most, most pressurized point. And so we tested that last week, and it certainly met that criteria. And it went above that, I believe, up to 25 PSI on the lower section. So in his opinion, as long as the contractor assembles and beds it without defect, the pipe will function for a long time. So, and that is why we did the pipe bedding material change order. That is why we went to the extra expense of bedding it. And in the future, that will be included in contracts, and we won't be doing change orders for that material. But I wanted to give you some assurance with regards to that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Does anybody have any questions at this time? Okay, so, and then to move on, I have a couple of other updates that I'd like to bring to your attention. The Davis Street, Street Extension. We are currently going through the survey process, the RFP. It's more like a two-bid process because it's such a relatively low-cost process just to have a surveyor go out. It'll be less than $35,000. So we'll get two bids for that. I had one surveyor go and take a look at it already, and he thinks it's going to be a good project to work on if he gets awarded the bid. And we'll continue to progress on that project. It's a priority, and it will get done.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And so the, does anybody have any questions with regards to the pretreatment plant startup project? I know I mentioned it earlier, but I just want to make sure that I handled that, the pretreatment startup project?
No, just hurry up.
Okay. I am done. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you, Austin.
All right.
I hope you have anything else.
Okay, so, direction from the city council to the city manager and city attorney. Does anybody have anything there? Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, I, I just wanna see if we can, I know we're in the middle of funding and grants and writing and stuff like that, but I just want to try and get a head start and a jump on possibly the street widening and stuff, finding funding for the engineering of that stuff, too, if we could work that in schedule so we could be ahead of time and schedule on that stuff. For, because I know it's, we talked about budgeting it for next year for some of that stuff, but if we can get some grants and stuff worked up for that stuff, I'd appreciate it. So we don't lose track of it.
Councilman Garner?
On that topic, Chris, do we want to wait until we have code enforcement, two, two people employed, and see how enforcement works with that before we, you know, maybe that mitigates the issues to widening those streets?
I think those are the narrowest streets in town, and I think it's a great project through the community, especially in that ward. I think I, I would like to see it done. I understand the parking issues and stuff like that with what your regards are, but I think we should still move forward in that aspect of things.
Just one more. I was gonna kind of throw this out to everybody tonight and to the city manager. I was on Facebook the other day and was looking through Rawland's and chatter, just looking for stuff. And I found something that seemed like a hotter topic than water, which was surprising. And it was the Pettigrew Drive to Higley Boulevard, where the, out of the, where you come from the elementary school and where it ties in right there, that, how it gets jammed up with traffic. And I don't, I don't use Facebook a lot, but that had so many posts and so many concerns with safety, you know, how hazardous it is to try to turn right or turn left because you always have one vehicle pulling forward further than the other, blocking the lane, or pulling further up to the stop sign than they should. And one of the ideas I was looking at with the way this, the turn is to the right is maybe just making it a constant flow of traffic on the right where it's a, where. Yeah, merge lane. Higley would be a three-lane right there all the way to where you take the exit to Casper. Or you could merge left and then get to the intersection. And this might be something we could bring to the urban systems. I was, when I spoke with Austin about this, the, I think YDOT owns this property right here. I can't remember the, the name of the company that owns it, but I think it's YDOT. And if, maybe they could do something, because they own, they own everything in this section where the road would actually have to be built. And so I don't want to postpone any of the other road projects, but maybe this would be more important than widening or the Davis one for now just because of the hazard that's presented for the kids, the buses, the parents, and everybody trying to get in and out of there, just the traffic throughput. So.
Isn't that a state road? So.
Right, but I.
So possibly it would be something that could be taken to the Urban Systems Committee. And that would be where you'd have to go with it.
On the, on the tie-in, because we're Pettigrew Drive, I think that would be the only section that we have to just have the responsibility where we just tie in there. But yeah, if, if council's okay with it, I'd like to present it to Urban Systems. It's a good idea.
I have no problem with it.
You all have no problem?
Yeah, because all they're gonna do is Urban Systems is gonna visit it. They'll probably take it to YDOT because they're involved with it. And they might be some money in there for, for doing something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, that is a very congested area. And of course, coming out of Highland Hills and that, that is often a very, an area that is risky. And they did have an accident a little bit down further here a couple weeks ago. So it is something I think we should look at.
What that key to proposal write about?
Oh, I hate those things.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Wasn't there talk, I mean, I know we had said the liability and risk was something that the city didn't want to take on, but there was discussion on a stoplight, you know, and there was something we didn't want to do there, but this might help mitigate that, you know?
If the state would do it.
If the state would do it.
Or something to that effect, but, well, that's it. I think the urban systems committee is exactly where it should go.
To have a formal referral and all that.
Right. I have no objection to that.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Austin?
If I may be able to quickly, just like to include a quick thing from Taylor McCourt at YDOT about this.
Sure.
At this time, they don't have any plans to do a study, and they're not considering an intersection improvement at 287 bypass at this time. And so he went, so the traffic engineer for District One went to the site, and what he observed, he went and took a look, took a look at the elementary school letting out, and he said that there weren't any queuing issues at the bypass or at 287 or the, or at Pettigrew that day. He said that this is a small sample size, but we need to do a further study of the issue before we can go further in detail. So I think at this point, from what I can tell, we can go and request them to do a traffic study, but it may end up being something we have to pay for, so.
Well, I think by presenting that to the urban systems committee, we can, we'll find out a lot about what they're willing to do and not do because they are at that table, the Wyoming YDOT is.
Okay.
Thank you. Sean?
I have a clarifying question with Councilmember Weisenberg, the widening of the streets. So I'm pretty sure that if we were to go after grants, we're gonna have to put some money into some engineering or some, you know? So my question is, do we want to, maybe we could bring it back up when we finish the audit and we bring the capital back up? Do you think that'd be a good time?
Yeah, I don't want to lose sight of this, you know, and have it pushed off and back. I think it's a great project, good for the community, good for that area of town, so I don't, I just don't want to lose sight of it. And I mean, if we can do, there's a lot of infrastructure money coming down, if we can tap into that without matching funds and stuff like that, or piggyback on some kind of grants with engineering studies already or something, we could look into that, so.
Just trying to, just wanted to keep it...
Yes.
Jason?
Just real quick, Councilman Weisenberg, you had mentioned the trees along that area. Just reminder that we should have our CUI tree inventory completed sometime November 2022, and that could identify some end-of-life trees, some diseased trees, some other trees that might need to be removed anyways throughout those properties, so.
That's a start. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I think this is something that should have been brought up during the budget time at the beginning, because that's the start of this. You're talking about, and I'm guessing probably several million dollars, because when you're talking about widening, you're talking about the infrastructure, the streets and the sewers that have been there, built since the 1930s. So there's gonna be some problems not counting the trees. So I think it should have been done during the budget time, and then we should have appropriated some funds for that engineering study, and then went from there. But so next year would be a good time to, to work on it.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So we did, we did discuss this in budget time, and we decided to push it off because the Davis Street was high priority on the list for the infrastructure. So it was proposed, so you know that.
But it was never brought up in, on the floor.
It was, it was brought up on the floor, and it was pushed off.
I don't remember a motion made on that.
So that was talked about.
And I would have supported it, if I'm getting it wrong.
And I understand.
Now, this ain't a free-for-all, one at a time here.
So I understand that, but it was pushed off for the next, next year possibly, to put, be put, brought back on at the table to possibly be put in the budget. But if we have some kind of funding available now, or that comes available, I'd like to just get a head start on it.
Well, there is gonna be a lot of, they keep saying, a lot of infrastructure money coming, so I appreciate you bringing that back up, but we'll just have to see how it goes. All right. So I just, oh, my computer's tricking me here. Okay. So is there anything else under that? Okay, so I'm gonna go to the next agenda item, which is the finished business. This is an ordinance approved the second reading. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of ordinance amending resolution number 7B 2015 Fees Finance Water Sewer and Utilities Appendix E. Page 2 of 2 Recycling Utility Fixed Rate in Changing the Monthly Fixed Rate Charged to Residents from $3 to $6.
Do I hear a second? There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending resolution number 7B dash 2015 Fees Finance Water Sewer and Utilities Appendix E. Page 2 of 2 Recycling Utility Fixed Rate in Changing the Monthly Fixed Rate Charged to Residents from $3 to $6. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. A motion passes with six yeas and one nay. Councilmember Weisenberg was nay.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the payroll. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve the June 5th, 2022 through June 18th, 2022 payroll register of $259,886.45.
Is there a second? Okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the June 5th, 2022 through June 18th, 2022 payroll register for $259,886.45. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yeas.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is to approve payroll. Councilman Smith?
Payables? I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of June 10th, 2022 to June 30th, 2022 in the amount of $675,519.42.
Yes, second? There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the accounts payable register for the period of June 10th, 2022 to June 30th, 2022 in the amount of $675,519.42. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with six yeas and one abstain. The abstain was Mayor Wycombe.
The reason I abstained is because I sold the city a sign that's paid for under this payable. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is approve a cooperative agreement. Councilman Smith?
Yes, I move to approve the cooperative agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the City of Rawlins to build an underpass at North Higley Boulevard near the intersection of North Higley Boulevard and Harshman Street Aberdeen Boulevard, costing the City of Rawlins $158,341.
Second? There's been a motion made and seconded to approve a cooperative agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the City of Rawlins to build an underpass at North Higley Boulevard near the intersection of North Higley Boulevard and Harshman Street Aberdeen Boulevard, costing the City of Rawlins $158,341. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting. Oh, wait a minute. Austin, would you like to tell us about that?
If you would like.
I would like. I didn't want you to get up for nothing. Sorry.
Okay. So this is for the agreement between the city and YDOT for the pedestrian underpass. The agreement includes a section where the city will pay 9.51% of the total project cost, and then the remainder would be 1.506 million dollars, 100, yeah, 1,506,659 dollars that will be available as federal funds, and that will be borne by YDOT. Anything in excess of that, if we go beyond that scope, will be borne by the city. I believe this is a great move forward in getting this pedestrian underpass complete and improving safety for our pedestrians in the city.
Yes.
I do, too. Thank you for working on that. Is there any discussion? Councilman Smith first, then Weisenberg.
I just want to say this project has been ongoing for, what, 10 years almost? And I am so excited because it's out in that area where we need an underpass for safety of children, and also years ago, one of my friends lost her son there. And someday I would like to maybe talk to you about naming that the Morrow Tunnel.
We could look at that.
Thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I think the thing that we need to put out there, though, is this 158,000 is coming off the urban system stuff, too. It's not then that we had, we have directly affecting our budget this year. So, so the public knows the crisis we've been in and everything, and our financial situation, it's nothing going against that, so.
Right. And the funding that the city is matching with is 6 billion funds.
Yeah.
And this is a huge step forward for the safety of our kids.
Awesome.
They don't need to play Frogger when this is done. That's a dangerous area. Terrible. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, Austin.
All right. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yeas.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is a MOU between the City of Rawlins and Bird Rides, Inc. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Rawlins and Bird Rides, Inc., for one year, once all signatures have been executed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and Bird Rides, Inc., for one year, once all signatures have been executed. Is there any discussion? Pam?
Honorable mayor and council, you have a pretty good timeline of when this has started. Bird did come to us back in January of 2021. The city and staff have done their due diligence. We actually did the reading and changed our ordinance for any company to come in and start a new business here. And so we laid the groundwork with the three ordinances were passed, and then Bird came in after that and then gave a, asked for an MOU to be signed between the city and Bird. I think it's just a really win-win for both of us. We can have more control of the city, where we want the e-scooters, how fast we want the e-scooters, and it's just a great partnership.
I agree. Any further discussion?
What's the time wait?
They would like to be here tomorrow. So I don't know when they're gonna land. I'll let you guys know.
I want to know the bird's landing.
Yeah.
Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, when I was reading through the MOU agreement, is this like generally what they, they present, too? Because, I mean, we have a bunch of kids that's 16, wanna, gonna want to ride on these things, and it's 18 on these, so just so I'm aware, I mean, it's just something, is that a question that we can drop it to a driver's license age, or is it 18 only?
So that was a great, that's a great question, Councilman Weisenberg. That was in their standard agreement, 18, and that's what the other communities have done. They haven't deviated. So it really, you know, we went with that. City attorney and I added a couple other things about the parameters and the speeds and stuff that were not in there, but we did not touch the age on that. That's a standard from Bird, that they feel comfortable.
It's probably for parental consent. They just want to skip that piece, I'm guessing.
Credit cards.
Yeah.
Say who they get to take to court.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably...
I get it. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Great question.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please open online voting.
Councilmember Martinez? Oh, thank you.
I was thinking about it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if there was a computer, but I apologize. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is approve a changing of a stop sign. Councilman Garner?
I move to recommend the changing of the stop sign located at South Higley Boulevard and East State Street to a yield sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to recommend the change of the stop sign, I wish you'd said stop signs, because that's more accurate, located at South Higley Boulevard and East State Street to a yield sign. Is there any discussion?
Honorable mayor, council, if there's any questions, I think we've talked about this in urban systems quite a lot, and we've already done a discussion earlier this year. I just wanted to get your approval, we'll go out there and finally do this for you guys.
Well, the one thing I would like to say is it should be both signs.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it would be.
Because the motion was signed, but I think this is a great move. There's 200 cars stopped to the one truck every day.
There's no reason to have, yeah.
And a, and a yield sign will be really appreciated by that neighborhood. Any other discussion? Thank you. Please open online voting.
What was it? Go faster?
Yeah.
There's a good speed limit.
Get it done.
Online vote. Online voting is open.
Thank you, Cody.
Online voting has closed. A motion passes with seven yeas.
Okay. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is approve a vacuum excavator from Ditchwich. Do I have a motion? Vice Mayor Wells?
For pointed discussion, I move to approve the purchase of a vacuum excavator from Ditchwich of the Rockies in the amount of $3,771.44 from Choke Cherry Impact Assistance.
Second? Would you repeat that dollar amount?
Yes.
$30,771.44.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the purchase of a vacuum excavator from Ditchwich of the Rockies in the amount of $30,771.44 from the Choke Cherry Impact Assistance. Is there any discussion? And Cody, I would like to ask, what is this thing?
Okay. I actually have, like some amp that's through to show you guys, just in case. Who would like one?
I would.
I would like to see it.
So this is, this is basically a truck-mounted vacuum excavator, and looking to the future of our pipeline maintenance and what we want to start accomplishing in the house.
Thank you.
At least we just want it here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this, this, as you know, most of our pipeline, this would be helping us clean out our air vac manhole manways that are basically, it's a pit that you get in that has our air vacs in it with a manhole cover on it, and our spring boxes, we could also utilize it for cleaning out, say, the river pump station and wastewater treatment plant. We could, we could mount this on the back of a pickup, we could mount this to a trailer, and it's just easier to get to the location. Our pipeline and our spring boxes are all off-road. There is, there is no road to get there. So our sewer jet truck, that would be ideal for it, it's just too heavy to get to that point. So looking to kind of take care of our own maintenance of that pipeline in the future, this is something that we're looking for. And I brought this to you guys now, it's because we've been shopping around looking for these. This is the only one in its size that we found in the vicinity, and this, if we don't order this one, it's an 18-month wait for the next one to come in. And I was hoping that we could actually get our spring boxes and our air vac vaults, everything cleaned out this summer, in just preparation for winter and next spring, when we really start moving water and/or if we need to work on it over the wintertime. So that was just my motivation to bring this to you guys and see if you would like us to go forward on it.
Would this work at the golf course?
As far as the bathrooms, probably not. Well, it probably would, but it doesn't hold as much water as that, that vault holds, or as far as waste. It's for, it's better to just send the vac truck out there.
It's gonna be a problem that we're having down there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We're, we're working hard to figure out why that's doing that. We're working hard to figure out why that's doing that. So, we've been working with Jason a lot on that.
Is there any other discussion, Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, so what's the standard recommendation for the tonnage of a vehicle that it fits on and...
It's a one-ton vehicle it's recommending.
So, do we currently have that vehicle in stock that you're gonna use it on?
We have a couple vehicles that are older. There was a Ford, it was like a 97 Ford one-ton that was decommissioned a while back. And our, one of our old mechanics pulled it out of decommission and recommissioned it. And it's running really great and it would be perfect for this. Now, in the future, we'd have to look for a truck, because this is an older truck, but it would get by for a few years for what we need it for. Or we could, we could look to, maybe in the future, I would like to see like a one-ton pickup with a crane or boom on the back that we could actually, that would help us lower these air vacs down in there. If we're changing out, we're doing any kind of valves, these things are very heavy. So, I'd like to have a truck that has some kind of boom on it with a trailer with this on it. So, when we go out in the field, we have a vacuum excavator, a crane for any, any one of these valves or air vac valves that we need to swap out.
And this will help you maintain that water line?
Yeah.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So, the gentleman that stepped forward earlier and talked and discussed about this, I do, I wanna just say thank you for your concern and I appreciate that. I don't know if you're aware or seen this at all. You can have this documented here.
Absolutely. I'll give him one.
Yeah, he could have this when I see it.
He is right. I mean...
I agree. I understand. I don't know if you're aware of what this is exactly. It's just a truck-mounted one. It's not a full-size one. I don't know if you're...
I have one.
So, you have one of these exactly? So, yeah, that's all. I just wanna make sure we have the proper equipment right now in stock. So, we don't have to spend another $70,000, $80,000 on a vehicle to equip this with.
No, that's what I was looking at, is we actually have a couple vehicles that we could equip this with for time being. In the future, we'd have to look for a new truck, but at least to get us going and start building this system, we could have it. And yes, we could hire this out to be done in years to come. But in years with the usage that we can get out of this, it won't be used a lot. But over years, how much are we gonna spend hiring it out versus buying this and then using it for...
Can you guys use this during, I assume you can, for like the winter breaks and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Will it help a lot with that?
Yes, it would. There was, there was a times in March when we had that winter break, we could've used this thing a few times out there. So, in emergency scenarios, when, you know, we have an emergency and we need it and you can't get the contractor out there fast enough, this would be helpful too as well. But it is the council's pleasure. I just wanted to bring this up to see which direction you would like to go with this.
Councilman Durst?
So, what's your alternative on a no? I mean, what happens if this is not approved?
If this, if that's not approved, we would probably look to hire it out in the foreseeable future. I mean, we need to, we need to keep our systems clean. In, in March, when we had our, our water incident, we were going to manhole to manhole to clean it, get these air vacs working while the water was coming towards them. We found a couple manholes that was buried in six inches plus of desert. It hadn't been opened in years. And when we opened up the manhole after we dug it out, there was probably three feet of dirt, grime, mouse nest and everything. And you could only see the top of it, the top of the air vac. So, it's, it's situations like that where it would be nice to have this out there. We could've vacuumed out that vault, got down in there, got the lever properly working and prepped it for the water coming up to it. So, we don't have a catastrophe on that.
So, I guess right off the top of my head, my biggest concern right now is that you haven't given any kind of a cost analysis of purchase versus renting. I mean, you just kind of admitted that you don't need it that often, but when you do, it's kind of a big deal, which I, again, I'm a full believer in being self-sufficient. I guess my concern is, at this point, you know, money is obviously tight. Everybody's got a list of, we'd sure like to have this, and it's just not all fundable. You know, there's already an option that maybe you could rent one or have something done, even if it's for a couple of years, and then this turns into a five-year plan to become sufficient. So, prior to supporting this, I'd like to see what, what all the numbers look like. I mean, is this gonna pay for itself in a year? Is it gonna pay for itself in a decade?
Yeah, well, we're about to have our river water station pumped out. And that, the cost of that just alone, we'll know. And we can put that against how many times we're gonna clean that out compared and compare prices. Yeah, and you're right. The great thing about this is in an emergency scenario, we'll have it on hand. Because it's sometimes like we had, it's nighttime breaks, so you can't go to a rental company in the nighttime and rent it. So, that would be the only plus side of renting versus buying.
Unless it was written in the contract, right? You will be available 24 hours a day if we need something like that. I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, yeah.
There's ways around all of this, right?
You're right. The contracting company that we're looking for, they're not even in this region right now. So, how long would it take them to get to site if we had a catastrophe? Yeah, so they would probably mobilize immediately, but then we'd have the drive time to get where that's at. That's just...
I mean, that's my concern, right, is I'd like to see some...
Oh, yeah. I mean, this is, this is a big purchase, just, you know, looking to the future on our, on our maintenance that we wanna try to fulfill in the future. This is a very, very needed piece of equipment.
Councilman Garner?
Oh, sorry. Martinez was before me. I was just wanting to do it.
I was just gonna echo what Mr. Durst said. I'd like to get that information. I was gonna ask that same question, say, what is the difference between the contracting it out and us owning it? If we could get that information, that would help in deciding whether we should purchase something.
Yeah, and I, I agree. I wish I did have that. The only, one of the reasons, like I said, that I brought it to you now is we've only found this one piece of equipment at this place. And we, there's another buyer looking at it. They said they'd hold it for this council meeting to see if we would, we'd like to purchase it. If we don't choose this route, it'll probably be sold and it'll be 18 months before they get another one in, because of manufacturing.
Have you had to contract before?
Huh?
Have you had to contract this type of work before?
No, it's...
Just to get an average of what, what it costs to contract it?
Well, we did do the river, the river pump station, we have had that vac before. I don't know off the top of my head what the cost was. Have you seen any invoices on the...
Something like $7,000 and we never got anything out of it.
Yeah, so, and that's, it's between $5,000 and $7,000 every time you have a company come out and do it. Kelly, I'm, I'm not sure if you can...
Well, that's, that's, so you're talking like a Badger truck, just as big as the vac truck that you have.
No, this is, this is a small...
No, the one, the one that went out to the river, my bread.
I believe...
I thought it was a trailer, because we can't fit, in the river pump station, the garage doors in there are only eight or 10-foot tall. So, we can't fit our vac truck in it. So, we have, we rented out a trailer. It was a vac trailer.
Was it the ground chamber at the plant?
At wastewater treatment plant it was too, but river pump station, the well there, we had that thing down. Not inside the doors.
No, but you can run that hose in there.
We don't have a long enough hose, no.
So, you can...
We could probably purchase adapter hoses. I mean, I don't know how much that's gonna cost for that vac truck. I mean, that could be pretty costly too.
So, it's fairly inexpensive.
So, with that, with that point though, I mean, the vac truck would work for that scenario, but it still goes. If we're using anything for our spring line maintenance, that truck would not work because of how far off the road our, our line is and the spots our vaults are at. You, you can't get to it with that big vac truck.
Would we be using this more than three times a year?
Certain scenarios, I would say, yeah. I, I know I wanna do the cleaning of our spring boxes and all of our vaults twice a year at least, and that's a big job in itself. You're talking a couple weeks at least of that truck being out there.
Okay. Councilman Garner?
So, so my understanding is you, you can't get to the vaults at all with the rigs you guys have?
The spring boxes, no.
Right.
Or our transmission line. It's, you know, anywhere from 20 to 50 feet off the highway out there through the ditch.
So, so you'll be able to use it for that, and you wanna do that twice a year? Plus, you'll be able to use it for almost all your excavation during like water breaks or line breaks?
We could, yes, we could, we could use it for any, any scenario where we... Our big vac truck is the better one. If we can't get to it with that truck, this would be second in line for getting this work done. But just the job in itself of going out to our springs and backing out all of our spring boxes out there and then all of our air vac vaults, that is a big job in itself. And doing that twice a year, that thing will earn its money.
Todd, you had something back there?
So, I come from the oil fields, so I've been around these ditchless things all the time. They're cool using for bringing calibers and stuff. Have you guys thought about talking to ready and bags and at least seeing if it would fit your needs before you purchase one? Because they're not as handy as what a person thinks they are. You know, I mean, all it takes is to leave them dirty a couple times and you're gonna have more money in fixing them than you would buying them. And I know when you're in the middle of the night and you're done with the work, people just walk off and go home. They're out at night. They're over it, you know. I really, I really think the city should think about having ready come in and see if it's even good enough for your needs. Because I don't think it's gonna be what you guys think it could be.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I'd like to say thank you and second that. Working in the oil and gas, most of my life, I've been around it a lot too, right? And sometimes the application is not great. And exactly what Todd is saying is if they're not cleaned properly and maintained properly, we're gonna be a lot more expense into repairs than what this thing's even worth at that price. So, I think it's something that we need to really look at and think and maybe get samples or of what it would cost us and stuff like that.
So, moving forward, I agree. Would we like to, at least for the first year, hire it out? And then we could see what the cost is for the first year of hiring out versus if we would buy it? Because I'm sure we could get prices for, I think, how many spring vaults do we have out there right now?
The early slots, I think they have about 90.
Yeah, and then we have 20, our spring boxes, we're running 25 right now?
Somebody do 90.
It's too expensive.
115?
Yeah.
Just in, just in the springs?
Twice a year?
Twice a year?
Twice a year.
It's quite a deal. Over $90,000.
But the two, the twice a year is your goal, not, not a recommended maintenance.
Well, I just assumed they do it twice a year.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying...
You know what I mean?
But something's come with a time. I mean, maybe it takes five years to get it to twice a year. But once a year is better than none at all and being abandoned and forgotten again, right?
No, I absolutely agree.
Ask anybody with a lawn.
Councilman Smith?
Well, given the math and the fact that we voted on this three times, it's coming out of Impact Assistance funding. I'd rather have equipment available to our staff anytime we need it. And I, I like to be able to support local business. But in this case, we've had a lot of water breaks lately and we have vaults out there that we need to maintain. And if you, if it's $1,000 per each vault, you said there's 90 vaults, isn't that like $90,000? This would be three times the $30,000 that we're spending right now. So, with, given that scenario, I would, I would urge that we say yes.
Well, when I, sorry.
Councilman Durst?
Apologize. I, I get it, but until I see a bid from an actual vendor, I, I just, I have a hard... I get it. I'm not saying that that's not a rough idea, but, you know, a company knows its costs. And when it comes through with a bid, that's, that's what you know you can count on.
Is this a bid?
All I'm saying is my cost analysis will come from an actual bid.
I, from an outside guy, I haven't been able to get one. Like I said, I brought this to you guys because of the timeframe on purchasing this piece of equipment, so...
I get your point.
Opportunity came and you have to ask.
I needed to bring it to your attention. Otherwise, we're gonna, it'll be 18 months and we're gonna have to pay for it out of pocket if we want it, if we want to go out there and do it.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting has opened. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with four yeas and three nays. The three nays are Councilmember Durst, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Weisenberg.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Next thing on our agenda is funding of Y Rollins. I would entertain a motion. Councilman Garner?
You got it, Doc. Yep. I move to approve $5,000 from the strategic plan funding towards the Y Rollins project to build community pride and transparency, appeal to tourists, and expand and recruit businesses.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve $5,000 from the strategic plan funding towards a Y Rollins, a project to build community pride and transparency, appeal to tourists and expand and recruit, expand and recruit businesses. Is there any discussion? Pam?
Honorable Mayor and Council, just standing up here, this is just finishing what we had started two weeks ago at the work session, explaining the process, the deliverables, again, six months of community input and where the money was coming from. And just here if you guys have any questions from the presentation that Nate and I did two weeks ago.
I'll be honest with you, I'm on the fence on this one.
Okay.
I, I can't decide. Councilman Weisenberg?
Yeah, I just wanna, I want an understanding of what part of the strategic plan, the plan funding this is coming out of. Where's this $5,000 out of the strategic plan coming from? What portion?
So, it's in the city manager's budget and the council per $10,000 for strategic plan stuff. And should that sort of be in good use of that fund?
I, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I knew where it was coming from.
Councilman Durst?
And I apologize if there was something that I missed on the last one. Did, do you, is this just a pre-funding to kind of get started or is there an immediate? We already have a particular plan that this money would fund right out of the gate, magazines, brochures, flyers, whatever.
So, this is, this is the entire process. It's $5,000 to the process. We're gonna do it in-house, and this is just paying for one consultant to come in for the evening to facilitate. This is to having town hall meetings. This is for advertising versus going out to bid for a $40,000, $45,000 out of, or a consultant project.
Okay.
And again, this is from the projects that were listed, that were approved. It was number nine under the five directives and a project that you guys had all approved. And again, I think, like it was said in the thing, build community pride and ownership, appeal to the tourists, retain, expand, and for recruiting businesses, and just having that structure so then we can move forward.
Councilman Smith?
Pam, does this dovetail into the economic development plan that, is that gonna be part of the overall $50,000 thing that we're working on? This is just one part of it here and it'll dovetail into that eventually?
Yeah, this is just a component that'll all fall in. There was a really good example that Myra had at our, at the work session two weeks ago, that's showing all the different components, but it will actually dovetail. It is, it is not the economic development plan. It is just the community branding and pride with information that then will be used, could be used, I should say, for the economic development plan.
I just wanna state, the $5,000 is, we were estimating high, that's why it says up to. This could be done, you know, that's including like mailing postcards about the survey to people or putting a prize, you know, if you take the surveys, you could win 100 bucks at a local restaurant, that kind of stuff. It could be done for less money because the time is coming from the staff. So, this is to see how much money council is willing to fund up to.
Yes. So, if you guys come back and say you only wanna approve $3,000, then we will work within our $3,000 budget.
Councilman Durst?
All I was just gonna say is I just, I guess I kinda understand the fence... All I was just gonna say is, I just, I guess I kind of understand the, the fence feeling, but, you know, I, I just, on this one, I think it's worth a go, just to see where, where it could go. I mean, I think it's a relatively small investment for something that could turn into a very large fruition in the long term, and I would, I would just like to see where, where it leads to, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it's got some, some prospects, and I'd just like to see it get started, I think.
And I think something that this is not just for economic development. This is for the city. This is for parks and rec. This is, I mean, this is everybody just saying what we're proud of. I mean, the quest, one of the questions we ask is, if you had to, you know, be a car, if Rollins was a car, what would you be? Or if you were going to bring somebody into Rollins, why would you say, "Come to Rollins because," and then just build off our assets? So I agree with you. But I do want to say that this will go across the city. This is not for just one department. This is our, this is our ownership. This is what we're proud of as a community, as a, as a city.
Councilman Weisenberg?
So five thousand, up to five thousand, is ultimately a survey?
No, if you look, it was, it's a six-month process. So there'll be surveys done, there'll be community input, there'll be community partners that are in the hospital, the school district, everybody working together. This, that is just one of the deliverables.
So are we, for survey, did we put this into the city magazine that we have? Because I mean, I mentioned that a long time ago about utilizing that and, and letting people know about the surveys coming out. I know this is maybe a later thing, but...
Yeah, um, so for what the money would go for, if you look at the attachments, there's the attachment that Nate and Pam presented, and it has like a little dollar sign next to things that could cost money. So there's like food could cost, you know, if we provide treats, or we have like lunch and workshops with business owners. Um, and then, yes, every time this, we'll put that this process is happening in the next city view, um, it has to be published like a month ahead of time, so there's kind of a lag time on it, but we're going to be talking about the process in the city view.
Councilman Smith?
So basically, I guess, bottom line is that we're getting rid of our analog logo and trying to establish a new branding, or a new...
Well, potentially, potentially, I mean, that is the...
That's where we're going.
It's going to be community-driven.
I think we discussed the brand of analog, keeping that there. I think I was pretty adamant through several council members not to, to get rid of the analog totally, because that's a, something with our city, you know?
Yeah, but this is more just about branding, like, why would a business want to come to Rollins? Why would somebody want to move here? Why do you love to live in Rollins? And then compiling that data and using what we know about Rollins to help us propel forward.
Isn't that what the fifty thousand dollar grant is for, though, that economic development got?
That's a little bit different, Chris.
That, that is true recruitment of going through and seeing which businesses would want to come to Rollins, but we need to have, I guess I want to say a carrot, like, what are we proud of? What do we want to be proud of? Why would they have, like, Virginia's for lovers, you know, as a statement, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, you know, it, it, but we don't want it to be just tourism. We want it to build with community pride, like, come to Rollins and live here, because we have the best darn parks in the state, you know, which is what Green River did. Their brand was, we want to be known for, that's what they did a community branding session, and they decided they wanted to be the best park city in the state, and so that's what they focused on for tourists, for recruitment, for just community pride. That's, that's a really good local example, is Green River.
Any other discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve a change of name. Councilman Smith?
Yes, I move to approve the change of name of City of Rollins Retail Liquor License Number Ninety-Five from Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, Inc., DBA Derby Club, Rollins to Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, Inc., DBA Three-O-Seven Horse Racing Dash Rollins.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the change of name of City of Rollins Retail Liquor License Number Ninety-Five from Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, Inc., DBA Derby Club, Rollins to Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, Inc., DBA Three-O-Seven Horse Racing Dash Rollins. Is there any discussion? Can you clear this up a little bit, Lynn?
Sure. So when the Three-O-Seven Horse Racing received their application, they quit their DBA as Derby Club Dash Rollins, and they did it, and then it went to the, you guys voted on it, it went to the liquor division, and they were fine with it. We printed the liquor license with Three-O-Seven, and then the DBA's name is also on the liquor license, Derby Club. When Tammy Wick, there's an email attached, what started this, there's the email that I received from Tammy Wick. She sent it to the Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, the CFO Kyle Ridgeway, and he was like, "Oh, no, the Derby Club Dash Rollins actually belongs to the gambling side and not the liquor side of their horse racing." So they, he said, "I don't know where it came from." Well, the thing is, he filled it out on every liquor license that he's been doing in the state of Rollin', in Wyoming. So it's just not Rollins, it's Casper and any of the others that they have opened, they put the Derby Club. So all of us have had to change to get rid of the Derby Club and just leave it as Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, Inc., doing business as Three-O-Seven Horse Racing, and the liquor, um, company, the liquor division asked if we could just put dash whatever municipality it's associated with, because when they mail out liquor, it has, that they're using your DBA name, and so they would need to distinguish between Rollins, Casper, Cheyenne, wherever their other operations are located. So the liquor division, you can see from the email, the liquor division is fine with them changing. We don't have to do anything with the application. All I have to do is change the liquor license. So that's the reasoning I brought it to you guys for just approval.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Um, the next thing on our agenda is to ratify the request for the Fourth of July fireworks show. Councilman Garner?
I move to approve ratifying the request authorizing the Rollins Fire Department to proceed with the Fourth of July fireworks show for Independence Day celebration in accordance with the City of Rollins Municipal Code Nine Point Three-Two Point Zero Four Zero.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve ratifying the request authorizing the Rollins Fire Department to proceed with the Fourth of July fireworks show for Independence Day celebration in accordance with the City of Rollins Municipal Code Nine Point Three-Two Point Oh Four Oh C. Is there any discussion? I will explain to everybody here how this happened. We just did not have it at our last meeting, and in order to not have a, a special meeting, there was a, I sent out a request for the councilman to approve, uh, having the fireworks, and then we would ratify it at this council meeting, and that's what we're doing now. So for those of you that kind of wonder why we're voting on having fireworks the other day, that's what that's about.
Go put them back in the tube.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't.
And I want to tell you, they were great. They were awesome. Um, any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Vice Mayor Wells?
I move to enter into executive session at eight forty-nine PM for Wyoming Statute Sixteen Four Four Oh Five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to enter into executive session at eight forty-eight for Wyoming Statute Sixteen Dash Four Dash Four Oh Five to consider or receive any information, any information classified as confidential by law. Please open, any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yays.